ओ भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम अज्ञानति मिरांधस्य आग्ननंजना शलाकय चक्षुरण मुलितम् येना तस्मई श्री गुरवे नमः नमः ओम विष्णु पादाय्या कृष्ण प्रेष्ठाय भूतेले श्रीमते भक्तिवेदांत स्वामिन्हिति नामिने नमस्ते सारस्वती देवी गौरवाणी प्रचारिणि निर्विशेषा सुन्यवादी पास्चात्यदेश तारिणि जय श्री कृष्ण चितन्या प्रभु नित्यानंद श्री अद्वैतगदाधरा श्रीवासाधि गौरभक्त वृंद हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा कृष्ण कृष्णा हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा फॉर मे हमले बसेंसेस तू ऑल डी डिवोटीज तू एसेंबल फॉर टुडे सेशन स्पेशल सेशन ऑन डी अकेशन ऑफ अपकमिंग श्री कृष्ण जन्मास्तमी लेट अस ट्राइ तू सेलेब्रेट श्री कृष्ण जन्मास्तमी बाय कीपिंग अवरसेल्स इन डी बेस्ट स्पिरिट्स बाय रिमेंबरिंग कृष्णा स्नाम रूप गुण लीला टुडे वे आर गोइंग तू डिसकस फोर ब्रिलियंट एंड एक्सेलेंट क्वालिटीज ऑफ लॉर्ड कृष्णा आज प्रेजेंटेड बाय श्रीले रूपगोस्वामी इन डी भक्तिरसामृत सिंधु कृष्णा स 64 क्वालिटीज आर वेरी ब्रीफली डिस्क्राइब्ड बाय रूपगोस्वामी इन डी भक्तिरसामृत सिंधु एंड टुडे वे आर गोइंग तू डिसकस लास्ट फोर यूनिक क्वालिटीज ऑफ कृष्णा व्हिच आर प्रेजेंट ओनली इन कृष्णा एंड नॉनएल्स एंड रूपगोस्वामी सेज डेट दिस क्वालिटीज आर स्पेसिफिकली प्रेजेंट ओनली इन डी पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ कृष्णा एंड नॉट इवन इन अदर फॉर्म्स ऑफ कृष्णा सो वे आर गोइंग तू डिसकस सच एक्सेलेंट क्वालिटीज आर यू अबिल तू सी डी स्क्रीन? ओके ग्रेट सो लेट मी स्टार्ट फोर यूनिक क्वालिटीज ऑफ कृष्णा एंड दिस फोर यूनिक क्वालिटीज आर नंबर वन लीला माधुर्यम सेकंड प्रेमना प्रियाधिक्यम थर्ड वेणु माधुर्यम फोर्थ रूपमाधुर्य वी मैन नॉट डिसकस दिस क्वालिटीज इन डी सेम आर्डर बट बट रूपमाधुर्य मींस कृष्णा स्फार्म इस सो स्वीट वेणु माधुर्य मींस कृष्णा स वे ऑफ प्लेइंग फ्लूट इस वेरी स्वीट लीला माधुर्य मींस कृष्णा स पास्टम्स आर एक्सट्रीमली स्वीट एंड फाइनली प्रेमना प्रियाधिक्यम मींस कृष्णा इस ऑलवेज सराउंडेड बाय हिस लविंग डिवोटीज कृष्णा इस नेवर अलोन नौ लेट्स डिसकस ईच ऑफ दिस क्वालिटीज वन बाय वन मैप ईच क्वालिटी विल डिसकस फॉर 15 मिनट्स एंड इन वन आवर इन 60 मिनट्स विल ट्राइ तू जस्ट टच ईच ऑफ दिस क्वालिटीज फर्स्ट लेट्स बिगिन विथ रूपा डी फॉर्म ऑफ कृष्णा डी फोर्थ कैंट ऑफ श्रीमद भागवतम सेज स्निग्ध प्रावृग्न श्यामम सर्व सऊंदर्य संग्रहम स्निग्ध मींस कृष्णा इस वेरी सॉफ्ट स्निग्ध प्रावृग्न श्यामम घना मींस क्लाउड्स सो कृष्णा स बॉडीली कॉम्प्लेक्शन इस लाइक डेट ऑफ मानसून क्लाउड्स आज वी सी इन मानसून सीजन दिस स्काईस ओवरकैस्ट विथ डार्क मानसून क्लाउड्स रेन बेरिंग क्लाउड्स कृष्णा स बॉडीली कॉम्प्लेक्शन इस सिमिलर तू दिस क्लाउड्स देरफॉर ही इस कॉल्ड स मेक श्याम और घनश्याम सर्व सऊंदर्य संग्रहम सर्व मींस ऑल सऊंदर्य मींस ब्यूटी संग्रह मींस कलेक्शन सो कृष्णा इस अन कलेक्शन ऑफ ऑल ब्यूटीज देयर इस सो मच ब्यूटी इन दिस मैटेरियल वर्ल्ड एंड दिस अनलिमिटेड ब्यूटी इन डी स्पिरिचुअल वर्ल्ड एंड कृष्णा इस डी कलेक्शन और डी कॉम्बिनेशन ऑफ ऑल डी ब्यूटीज इन फैट कृष्णा इस डी सोर्स ऑफ ऑल दिस ब्यूटीज अलसो व्हेन डी एंटीर ब्यूटी इन डी स्पिरिचुअल एंड मैटेरियल वर्ल्ड इस पुट टुगेदर इट वन प्लेस डेट इस कृष्णा सर्व सऊंदर्य संग्रह नेक्स्ट कृष्णा स ब्यूटी इस फर्दर डिस्क्राइब्ड इन सो मेनी ब्यूटफुल श्लोका ऑफ श्रीमद भागवतम एंड मेनी अदर स्क्रिप्ट्यूर्स सो भागवतम सेज यन्मर्क्या लीलौ पईकम् स्वयोगम् आयाबलम् दर्शयत अग्रहीतम् विस्मा पनम् स्वस्यत सो भगर्दे एहे परमपदम् भूषण भूषण अंगम् आई विल नॉट डिसकस डी फुल श्लोका बट डी लास्ट फ्रेज इस भूषण भूषण अंगम् भूषण मींस ऑर्नमेंट अंगा मींस कृष्णा स बॉडी बॉडीली लिम्स व्हेन सम्बडी डेकोरेट्स थंसेल्स विथ ऑर्नमेंट्स दे लुक वेरी ब्यूटफुल इसेंट इट? बट व्हेन कृष्णा डेकोरेट्स हिमसेल्फ विथ ऑर्नमेंट्स लाइक दिस आमलेट्स दिस ब्रेसलेट्स दिस इयररिंग्स दिस नाइस मुखुत वेस्ट बेल्ट सो लाइक डेट व्हेन कृष्णा डेकोरेट्स हिमसेल्फ विथ ऑर्नमेंट्स कृष्णा डिसेंट बिकम ब्यूटफुल डी ऑर्नमेंट्स बिकम ब्यूटफुल बिकॉज़ कृष्णा इस ऑलरेडी ब्यूटफुल डी ब्यूटी ऑफ कृष्णा ब्यूटिफाइस डी ब्यूटी ऑफ डी ऑर्नमेंट्स नॉट डेट डी ऑर्नमेंट्स आर ब्यूटिफाइंग कृष्णा इवन विथ डॉट वेयरिंग ऑल दिस ऑर्नमेंट्स अलसो कृष्णा लुक्स सो ब्यूटफुल बट बिकॉज़ कृष्णा वर दिस ऑर्नमेंट्स डी ऑर्नमेंट्स ब्यूटी इनक्रीजेस डेट इस डी स्पेशलिटी ऑफ कृष्णा स ब्यूटी रूपमाधुर्यम व्हेन कृष्णा कम्स आउट ऑफ नंदभवन एंड एंटर्स डी फॉरेस्ट ऑफ रिंदावन व्हेन ही वॉक्स थ्रू डी फॉरेस्ट्स ऑफ रिंदावन और डी स्ट्रीट्स ऑफ विलेज ऑफ रिंदावन डी गोपीस बिकम सो एनचैंटेड डी कॉव्स स्टॉप ग्रेजिंग एंड स्टार्ट स्टेरिंग एट कृष्णा डी बर्ड्स दे फॉरगेट डीर सॉन्ग्स एंड दे लुक एट कृष्णा ओनली डी ट्रीज ब्लोसम ऑल डी फ्लोर्स एंड डी फ्रूट्स इन डी ट्री बिकम वेरी जुबिलेंट सो डी ट्री स्टार्ट ब्लोसमिंग डी फ्लोर्स ऑन डी ट्री स्टार्ट ब्लोसमिंग एक्सप्रेसिंग डीर लव फॉर कृष्णा इवन डी शाई डियर अलसो कम क्लोज तू कृष्णा वेरी क्यूरियस तू सी कृष्णा स ब्यूटी चैमल एंड अट्रैक्टेड बाय कृष्णा स ब्यूटी डेट इस डी पावर ऑफ कृष्णा स ब्यूटी डी लेडीज ऑफ मथुरा डिस्क्राइब सिक्स एस्पेक्ट्स ऑफ कृष्णा स ब्यूटी आज सीन बाय डी गोपीस ऑफ रिंदावन हिड इस अन वेरी वेरी ब्यूटफुल एंड एनचैंटिंग श्लोका फ्रॉम डी 10th कैंट ऑफ श्रीमद भागवतम दिस श्लोका सेज लावण्यसारमसमो अर्धमनन्यसिद्धम् द्रिगभिपिबंत्यानुसव अभिनवम् दुरापम् एकांतद्धामयशशहश्री आयश्वरस्य व्हाट ग्रेट तपस्या डिड डी गोपीस ऑफ रिंदावन डू तू बी अबिल तू सी डी ब्यूटफुल फॉर्म ऑफ कृष्णा एंड डेट फॉर्म ऑफ कृष्णा इस ब्यूटफुल इन सिक्स वेस नंबर वन इस लावण्यसारम नंबर तू असमोर्धम नंबर त्री अनन्यसिद्धम नंबर फोर द्रिगभिपिबंत्यानुसव अभिनवम् नंबर फाइव दुरापम नंबर सिक्स एकांतद्धामयशशहश्री आयश्वरस्य लेट्स सी व्हाट आर दिस सिक्स एटरब्यूट्स फर्स्ट वन इस लावण्यसारम मींस कृष्णा स फॉर्म इस डी एसेंस ऑफ ऑल लवलीनेस सारम मींस एसेंस लावण्य मींस लवलीनेस सो कृष्णा स फॉर्म इस डी एसेंस ऑफ ऑल लवलीनेस सेकंड इस असमोर्धम देयर इस नॉट अदर फॉर्म व्हिच इस एस ब्यूटफुल अन कृष्णा स फॉर्म एंड देयर इस नॉट फॉर्म व्हिच इस मोर ब्यूटफुल थन कृष्णा स फॉर्म सामा मींस इक्वल उर्धम मींस बेटर देयर इस नॉट फॉर्म डेट इस इक्वल तू कृष्णा स ब्यूटी और बेटर थन कृष्णा स ब्यूटी डेट इस सेकंड पॉइंट थर्ड अनन्यसिद्धम एंड दिस फॉर्म ऑफ कृष्णा इस सो परफेक्ट बिकॉज़ कृष्णा डिड नॉट अक्वेर दिस ब्यूटी फ्रॉम सम्वेल्य एल्स दिस ब्यूटी इस सो नेचुरल इंटेंसिकली प्रेजेंट इन कृष्णा स फॉर्म अनन्यसिद्धम ही डिड नॉट गेट इट फ्रॉम सम्वेल्य एल्स देन फोर्थ इस द्रिगभिपिबंत्यानुसव अभिनवम डी मोर यू ड्रिंक डी नेक्टर ऑफ कृष्णा स ब्यूटी डी मोर यू हैंकर फॉर इट जनरली इन दिस वर्ल्ड व्हेन यू सी एन ऑब्जेक्ट डी ऑब्जेक्ट मैन अपीयर ब्यूटफुल तू यू आफ्टर रिपीटेडली सीन डेट ऑब्जेक्ट डी अट्रैक्टिवनेस ऑफ डी ऑब्जेक्ट विल गो विथ डी ब्यूटी ऑफ डी ऑब्जेक्ट विल नॉट इंप्रेस यू मोर थन सम्तान वी मैन गेट बोर्ड वी मैन गेट टायर्ड वी मैन गेट एक्सास्टेड वी मैन डिवर्ट अवर टेंशन तू समथिंग एल्स बट कृष्णा स ब्यूटी इस नॉट लाइक डेट डी मोर यू लुक एट कृष्णा स ब्यूटी डी मोर ही अपीयर्स ब्यूटफुल राइट द्रिगभिपिबंत्य विथ योर आइस इफ यू ड्रिंक डी नेक्टर ऑफ कृष्णा स ब्यूटी योर आइस कीप ऑन हैंकरिंग फॉर डी ब्यूटी अगेन एंड अगेन देन फिफ्थ क्वालिटी इस दुरापम दिस ब्यूटी ऑफ कृष्णा इस नॉट सो इजीली अटेनेबल इट्स वेरी वेरी रेयर एक्सट्रीमली रेयर ब्यूटी डी ओपरचुनिटी तू एक्सेस कृष्णा स ब्यूटी और रेलिश कृष्णा स ब्यूटी इस वेरी रेयर मेनी पीपल सा कृष्णा व्हेन कृष्णा मैनिफेस्टेड हिमसेल्फ इन डी मैटेरियल वर्ल्ड इन डी द्वापर युगा सो मेनी डिवोटीज सा कृष्णा डी गोपा सा कृष्णा डी गोपी सा कृष्णा एंड पांडवा सा कृष्णा कुंती महारणी सा कृष्णा ऑल दिस डिवोटीज रेलिश डी कृष्णा स ब्यूटी बट शिशुपाल अलसो सा कृष्णा दुर्योधन अलसो सा कृष्णा जरासंध अलसो सा कृष्णा कम्सा अलसो सा कृष्णा बट दे नेवर रेलिश डी कृष्णा स ब्यूटी इंस्टेड दे वांटेड तू किल कृष्णा दे वर हेटिंग कृष्णा यू सी? सो तू बी अबिल तू रेलिश कृष्णा स ब्यूटी इस वेरी रेयर अल्दो कृष्णा स ब्यूटी इस एक्सेसिबल तू सम फॉर्चुनेट सोल्स अनलेस दे रियली फॉर्चुनेट दे मैन नॉट रेलिश कृष्णा स ब्यूटी राइट दे मैन मिस डी गोल्डन ओपरचुनिटी ऑफ रेलिशिंग कृष्णा स ब्यूटी बिकॉज़ ऑफ लाक ऑफ पूरीटी इन डीर ऑन कॉन्शियसनेस देरफॉर दुरापम पीपल मैन नॉट बी अबिल तू रेलिश कृष्णा स ब्यूटी मेनी पीपल कम तू टेक दर्शन ऑफ डी डिटीज ऑन डी अल्टर इन अन टेंपल सम पीपल नेचुरली बिकम प्रेयरफुल दे फोल्ड डीर हैंड्स दे ऑफर हार्टफुल प्रेयर्स दे गेट अट्रैक्टेड तू डी ब्यूटफुल फॉर्म ऑफ डी लॉर्ड सम पीपल दे बिकम सो रेस्टलेस डेट दे कैन नॉट स्टैंड इन फ्रंट ऑफ डी अल्टर और डी ब्यूटफुली डेकोरेटेड डिटीज इवन फॉर वन मिनट और हाफ मिनट राइट? अनलेस डी कॉन्शियसनेस इस प्योर नॉट वन मैन नॉट बी अबिल तू रेलिश डी ब्यूटफुल फॉर्म ऑफ कृष्णा अल्दो रूपमाधुरी कृष्णा स ब्यूटी इस वेरी स्वीट स्टिल तू रेलिश वी नीड सम पूरीटी देन फाइनली डी सिक्सथ क्वालिटी इस एकांतद्धामयशशहश्री आयश्वरस्य दिस फॉर्म ऑफ कृष्णा इस डी वन एंड ओनली अबाउट ऑफ ऑल आयश्वरियास ऑल ऑप्युलेंसेस आयश्वरिया मींस ऑप्युलेंस एंड कृष्णा हैस सिक्स ऑप्युलेंसेस डू यू नॉट व्हाट आर डी सिक्स ऑप्युलेंसेस? आई थिंक इट्स होमवर्क फॉर यू आई विल नॉट आस्क ओके फाइन यू कैन स्पीक पवनी फ्रॉम फार्मिंगटन हिल्स यस?
फुल वेल्थ फुल नॉलेज फुल रिनेंसियेशन फुल फेम फुल आयश्वरिया सक्षम
तू मोर तू मोर रिमाइंडिंग हां?
फुल स्ट्रेंथ
ओके स्ट्रेंथ करेक्ट
फुल नॉलेज
फुल फेम नॉलेज यार डिसेड फेम किर्ति सो दिस आर डी सिक्स ऑप्युलेंसेस ऑफ कृष्णा सो ही इस कंप्लीटली दिस फॉर्म इस फिल्ड विथ ऑल ऑप्युलेंसेस राइट दिस आर डी सिक्स एटरब्यूट्स ऑफ कृष्णा स ब्यूटी फर्दर लेट्स सी डी गोपीस ऑफ रिंदावन आर सी शरदुदाशये साधुजातसत सरसिजोदरा श्रीमुषा दृश्य वरदनिघ्नतो नेहकिंवद शरदुदाशये शरद मींस शरद दृतु अटम सीजन उदाशये मींस वाटर रिजर्वायर्स और लेक्स इन डी अटम सीजन डी लेक्स ऑफ रिंदावन आर फिल्ड विथ सो मेनी ब्यूटफुल लोटेसेस साधुजातसत सरसिजा राइट? सो देयर आर वेरी ब्यूटफुल फ्रेशली ब्लोसम्ड लोटेसेस इन डी अटम लेक्स ऑफ रिंदावन एंड कृष्णा स ब्यूटफुल फेस रिसेंबल्स डी इनसाइड ऑफ डी लोटस श्रीमुषा दृश्य दिस इस डी ब्यूटी ऑफ कृष्णा अक्चुअली कृष्णा इस मोर ब्यूटफुल थन लोटस कृष्णा इस मिलियन टाइम्स मोर ब्यूटफुल थन ए लोटस बट स्टिल कृष्णा स ब्यूटी इस कंपैर्ट तू ए लोटस बिकॉज़ लोटस इस वन ऑफ डी मोस्ट ब्यूटफुल ऑब्जेक्ट्स इन डी मैटेरियल वर्ल्ड जस्ट बिकॉज़ नॉट अनफ कंपैरिजंस आर नॉट देयर दिस इस पिक्ड अप दिस लोटस बट लोटस अलसो हैस अनदर एस्पेक्ट लोटस इस फिजिकली ब्यूटफुल बट अनदर एस्पेक्ट ऑफ डी ब्यूटी ऑफ लोटस इस डेट लोटस टेक्स बर्थ इन मुर्द अल्दो लोटस एमनेट्स फ्रॉम दिस मुड़ी वाटर्स स्टिल लोटस रिमेंस प्योर सॉफ्ट कलरफुल एंड फ्रैग्रेंट सिमिलरली अल्दो डी सुप्रीमलॉर कृष्णा अपीयर्स इन डी मैटेरियल वर्ल्ड व्हिच इस डर्टी स्टिल कृष्णा रिमेंस प्योर अनकंटेमिनेटेड देरफॉर कृष्णा इस कंपैर्ट तू लोटस सो लेट्स कंटिन्यू अवर डिस्कशन ऑफ कृष्णा स रूपमाधुरी रुक्मणी देवी हर्ड अबाउट कृष्णा व्हेन शी वास वेरी यंग आज अन प्रिंसेस ऑफ विदर्भ सिटी व्हेन शी वास इन डी विदर्भ पालेस सो मेनी ब्राह्मण एंड सेज जस्ट लाइक नारदमणी यूज्ड तू विजिट डी पालेस दे वुड डिस्क्राइब कृष्णा स ब्यूटी एंड कृष्णा स क्वालिटीज एंड रुक्मणी देवी वुड सिंसियरली हियर ऑल डी डिस्क्रिप्शंस ऑफ कृष्णा स क्वालिटीज एंड ब्यूटी एंड शी बिकम सो अट्रैक्टेड तू कृष्णा डेट शी वांटेड तू मैरी कृष्णा विथ डॉट अवर विथ डॉट सीन कृष्णा शी नेवर सा कृष्णा बट स्टिल शी डेवलप्ड सो मच ऑफ अट्रैक्शन तुवर्ड्स कृष्णा जस्ट बी हीरिंग अबाउट ही शी सेज श्रित्वागुणां भवनसुंदरस्रन्वताम् ते शी डिस्क्राइब्स कृष्णा इस भवनसुंदर भवना मींस दिस यूनिवर्स सुंदरा मींस ब्यूटफुल हैंडसम मैन कृष्णा यर डी मोस्ट हैंडसम मैन इन डी एंटीर यूनिवर्स शी नेवर सा बट शी सेज दिस नॉट डेट शी हैस सीन सम सेल्फी नारदमणी वास नॉट शोइंग डी सेल्फी ऑफ कृष्णा और सम फोटोग्राफ ऑफ कृष्णा शी नेवर इवन सा फोटोग्राफ और पेंटिंग ऑफ कृष्णा अलसो एट लिस्ट भागवतम डिसेंट से डेट बट शी अंडरस्टड जस्ट बी हीरिंग शी सेज रूपम दृश्यम दृश्यमताम् अखिलार्थलाभम् जस्ट बी सीन डी ब्यूटफुल रूप ऑफ कृष्णा अखिलार्थलाभम वन कैन अटेन ऑल पॉसिबल गेंस स्पिरिचुअल गेंस विल बिकम सो स्पिरिचुअली अनलाइवेंट एंड अनलाइटेड जस्ट बी सीन डी ब्यूटफुल फॉर्म ऑफ कृष्णा
Even they get attracted to Krishna's beauty. And the song continues. If we describe the whole song, then we may not be able to go to the other madhuris. I'll just recite this two slogans and move ahead. The song continues. I'll just recite and then go ahead. Tri Bhanga Deha Sundaram, Nakhadhyutii Sudhakaram. Amulyaratna Bhushanam, Namami Nandanandam. Sugandha Angasaurabhamb, Uro Virajikaustubham. Spurat Shri Vatsalanchanam, Namami Nandanandam. Prindavanasu Nagaram, Vilasa Anugavasisam. Suredragarbhamochanam, Namami Nandanandam. Prajanganasu Nayakam, Sadasukhapradayakam. Jagannahpralobhanam, Namami Nandanandam. In this way Krishna's beauty is so beautifully described in this song. Krishna's beauty is not just about appearance. It's an expression of his love, his joy and his divinity. Means physically Krishna is definitely beautiful. But that is not material beauty that fades. It is spiritual beauty. It is a source of unlimited bliss. Your heart becomes filled with happiness when you see Krishna's beauty. Generally, when you see something, your eyes should become joyful. But when you see Krishna's form, all your senses become joyful. So your entire body, your heart, your mind, everything becomes joyful, right? So, so deep and radiant that even he desires to taste it. Sometimes Krishna looks at his own beauty. In the crystal clear floors of Dwarka and he wonders, who is this beautiful personality? Krishna wonders at his own beauty. And thus his beauty increases. He becomes even more beautiful. Then Krishna wonders even more, how come this man's beauty is increasing? As I'm appreciating his beauty, his beauty is increasing, ever expanding. So this is how Krishna's beauty is ever expanding. It's already unlimited, but still it keeps on expanding. That is about Rupa Madhuri. Means Krishna's beauty is so enchanting. Then second quality that we are going to discuss today is Leela Madhuryam. Leela means Krishna's pastimes. Krishna is a performer of sweet pastimes, enchanting pastimes, and all his pastimes are also so sweet. And Krishna performs pastimes with his friends, the Gopa Boys. And the gopi girls, the younger gopis. And his parents like Yashodamata, Nandamaharas and all the elderly gopis and Gopas of Rindavan. And Krishna also performs pastimes with his devotees, like the Pandavas, like Udhava, Arjuna. So whether it is Sakhyarasa or Dasyarasa or Vatsalyarasa or Madhuryarasa. All the pastimes of Krishna in all the rasas are extremely sweet. Therefore, one quality of Krishna is Leela Madhuryam. Very sweet performer of pastimes. So Krishna, when he goes to the forest, he is surrounded by all the Gopas. All the Gopas surround Krishna and they have their prasadam, lunch. So these childhood pastimes of Krishna are so enchanting that Parikshit Mahars describes that there are seven effects of hearing Krishna's Balya Leela, childhood pastimes specifically. What are they? Means the pastimes of Krishna specifically Krishna's childhood pastimes are very pleasing to the ears. Karanaramyani, first effect. Manognani means they are very, very enchanting to the heart also, to the mind also. They are pleasing to the ears, karna, they are pleasing to the mind, mana. Then When you hear Krishna's childhood pastimes, you know what happens? Rati means attraction, arati means lack of attraction. Some people are not attracted to hearing Krishna Katha. That lack of attraction is destroyed, means you will develop some interest in hearing Krishna Katha. By hearing Krishna's Bali Leela. If you're not finding very enthusiastic, if you're not finding yourself very enthusiastic to hear Bhagavatam. Better hear Krishna's pastimes, childhood pastimes, automatically you'll develop interest. That is Apaiti Arati. That is third quality. Fourth is Vittrishna. Trishna means hankering, deep hankering. So sometimes we may hear Bhagavatam, but even while hearing Bhagavatam, we may not be able to relish it. There is no trista, there is no hankering. It's not that you are looking forward to hear. The previous case is you have no interest to come and sit only. And this case is even if you're sitting and hearing, you are not relishing it. But that lack of relish will be destroyed when you hear Krishna's childhood pastimes. Once you hear Krishna's childhood pastimes, you will start hankering to hear more and more and more. How many times have you heard some beautiful childhood pastimes of Krishna like Putana Leela? Or Dhrinavarta Leela, or Damodar Leela, or Shakataswar Leela, or or any other Brahavi Mohan Leela? And you felt like, I want to hear more and more and more. That's the potency of Krishna's childhood pastimes, Bali Leela. Then fifth effect is Satvam here means heart. One's heart is completely purified by hearing Krishna's childhood pastimes. Achirena, very soon. Achirena Pumsaha means very soon one's heart is purified. Then sixth effect is Bhaktirharau. Your devotion until Adhari is increased. Then seventh is Your friendships with other devotees will also increase. These are the seven effects of hearing Krishna's Leelas, especially childhood Leelas. What are they? Let's revise once. First, Karanaramyani. Means Krishna's Bali Leelas are very pleasing to the ears. Second, Manognani, they are pleasing to the mind. Third, Apaiti Arati. Our lack of distaste, sorry, lack of taste means distaste is destroyed. Fourth Vittrishna, we'll hanker more and more to hear. Fifth, heart is purified. Sixth, will develop deep devotion. Seventh, will develop deep friendships with devotees. Clear? But why did Krishna perform so many pastimes? Krishna stays in the spiritual world, in Golakavindavan. From Golakavindavan, he came to this material world to perform pastimes. Why should he come to this miserable, material world, dirty material world to perform such beautiful Leelas? This beautiful sloka answers this. Excellent sloka from the ninth kind of Bhagavatam. Krishna performed pastimes in Dwarka. Krishna performed pastimes in Dwaparayuga. At the end of Dwaparayuga Krishna appeared and performed pastimes. And in the beginning of, and Kalayuga is about to come. So Krishna understood that very soon Kalayuga people are going to come. They need some subject matter for discussion. They need some subject matter for discussion. Therefore, let me appear at the end of Dwaparayuga. One second. Let me, let me appear at the end of Dwaparayuga and perform so many Leelas and create some subject matter for their discussion. This is Krishna's mercy. He is so loving and caring towards all of us. He cares for us so much. That knowing that there will be so many devotees who will take birth in Kalayuga. And I need to create some subject matter for their discussion. So that they can gather together and do some parasparanukathnam. They discuss about my wonderful pastimes and become purified. So Krishna appeared at the end of Dwaparayuga and performed so many enchanting Leelas. And created some subject matter, material for us to sit and discuss and contemplate upon. So Krishna's performance of pastimes are purely out of his mercy. Dukkha means distress, shoka means lamentation, tama means ignorance. Nudham means to completely subdue, to destroy our distresses, our lamentation and our ignorance. And I'm out of his deep compassion upon all devotees. He appeared and performed pastimes. Now Kalayuga has not yet come. When Krishna appeared, it is still Dwaparayuga only. Kalayuga is going to come in future. So Krishna is concerned about the future devotees. Devotees are going to appear in future, that is all of us. Right? So just like parents, they earn so much money. Just so that their children will enjoy that money in future. Let, let my children have a better future. For that, let me accumulate money, earn money, make a nice house, right? So or let me prepare some money, let me arrange some funds for their future studies. Similarly Krishna, the Supreme Father, he descended on this planet, performed Leelas and created some subject matter. So that his future devotees can take benefit of them, right? This is Krishna's mercy. So there are further descriptions about Krishna's Leelas. Tava Vikreditam Krishna, Udhava spoke to Krishna. Oh Krishna, all your pastimes are Paramangalam, they are extremely auspicious. Karanapiyusham, they are like nectar for the ears. One who hears those pastimes, they will give up all attraction to other materialistic topics. Sometimes, if you are getting too much attracted to materialistic topics. Just hear Krishna's topics. Automatically our attraction towards materialistic topics mundane, bad, soul degrading topics is destroyed. For that, we need to hear Krishna Katha. So this beautiful sloka describes three effects of hearing Krishna Katha. Number one, Paramangalam, they are extremely auspicious Krishna Leelas. Number two, Karanapiyusham, means they are very, they are like nectar for the ears. Number three, Tejantianyespraha, they will create detachment from other topics. These are the three effects of Krishna's Leelas. And similarly, there are so many such beautiful pastimes. Now, what kind of pastimes Krishna performs? As a small child in Vrindavan, Krishna steals butter. Krishna plays with Gopas. And Krishna gives so much of happiness to all the Vrijavasis. Now, in Vrindavan, Krishna performs pastimes in three phases. Number one, Kovara Leela. Or also called Baliya Leela. Number two, Poganda Leela. Number three, Kaishora Leela. Let me explain. I will just write something here and then explain. Where should I write here? Are you able to see Kovara? Kovara also calls Baliya. Means the pastimes that Krishna performs from his birth till he is three years, four months old. Those Leelas are called Kovara Leelas. The next Poganda Leelas. Poganda Leela is the second stage. The pastimes that Krishna performs from three to 3.4 years up to six years, eight months. Are called Poganda Leela. Then next is Kaishora Leela. Kaishora Leela. The pastimes that Krishna performs from six years, eight months till 10 years old. They are called Kaishora Leela. Generally Kovara means birth till five years age. Poganda means six to 10. Kaishora means 11 to 15. Beyond this is yavana, right? But somehow Krishna's intelligence and bodily growth at the age of three years, four months. He is like five-year-old child. And Krishna's intelligence and bodily growth at the age of six years, eight months is like a 10-year-old. And as of 10, he looks like a 15-year-old child. And from 16, he doesn't grow. After 16 Krishna forever looks 16-year-old boy only. Maybe maximum 20, 25-year-old boy, that's all. He never grows old. This is the speciality of Krishna's Leelas. And by the way, all these Kovara Leelas are more accessible too. Let me just erase it. I hope you are okay with it. You must have noted down. So Kovara Leelas are more accessible and relishable by Vatsalya devotees. Means Krishna's parents. The Mother Yashoda, Ananda Maharas and all the elderly gopis and Gopas of Vrindavan, relish all the Kovara Leelas of Krishna. Then Poganda Leelas of Krishna are relished by Sakhyabhattas. Means Krishna's cow head boyfriends, Gopas. Then Kaishora Leelas are more relationed and accessed by Madhurya Bhattas. Madhurya Bhattas means the younger gopis of Vrindavan who see Krishna as lovers. So this is the bifurcation of Krishna's childhood pastimes. Is it clear? Vrindavan pastimes. We are discussing about Leela Madhuri, right? So we are trying to understand different stages of the Leelas of Krishna. Next. That is Baliya Leela. For example, if you see Kalia Leela. In this one Leela, how enchanting this Leela is, in this one Leela Krishna showed his affection towards everybody. He was dancing on the hoods of Kalia. And completely purifying Kalia from his poison and also from his poisonous mentality. Poison is of two types here. In the body of Kalia, there is some poison. And in the mind of Kalia also, there is lot of poison. He is very envious, he is very angry. Krishna purified Kalia from both types of poison. And Krishna also gave so much of happiness to all the devatas who are watching this Leela. Krishna danced on the hoods of Kalia. Kalia's heads are like a slippery stage. I think some of you may have danced, I have seen, I'm seeing so many kids here. Some of you may be good at dancing. So did you ever dance on a slippery stage? A stage which is very uneven. First thing is you need a flat stage. If the stage is uneven, you cannot dance. On top of it, if this uneven stage is also slippery. You cannot dance at all. But Krishna is dancing on an uneven stage of Kalia's hoods, thousands of hoods. And on top of it, Krishna is dancing on these slippery hoods of Kalia. Not only uneven stage, it's a slippery stage. On top of it. Every single head of Krishna is trying to bite. Sorry, every single head of Kalia is trying to bite Krishna. If the stage is trying to devour you, if the stage is trying to inject poison into your feet, how can we dance? And even if we have managed to dance in such circumstances. How can we dance in a very balanced way, in a very enchanting way, in a, in a, in a attractive way? But Krishna's dance is very harmonious. And while dancing Krishna is playing flute also, on top of it. Krishna is playing flute also. And all the devatas came, Kinnaras, Kimpurshas, Gandharvas, all these Gandharvas came and they started playing Brangga. Karatal. They played all kinds of musical instruments. And Krishna's dance is matching the musical performance there also. And not just Krishna is making some steps. As Krishna is dancing on the hoods of Kalia. He is also giving so much of training to all the absaras, the professional dancers in the heavenly planets. So these professional dancers, they are seeing Krishna's enchanting dance and they're learning, oh, this move we have never seen. So this is how Krishna is performing such enchanting Leelas in Vrindavan. That is just one, and not, not only, not only satisfying Kalia, purifying Kalia. And also satisfying the devatas in the upper planets. And this dance performance is also seen by all the Vrijavasis who are standing on the shore of Vrindavan. Shore of this Yamuna Lake, they are also getting enchanted. And later Nagapatnais came. They started offering such enchanting prayers to Krishna. And he is blessing them also. In one Leela Krishna is showing his affection on everybody. If Kalia Leela is like that, just imagine how enchanting Govardhan Leela would be. Govardhan Leela Krishna lifted Govardhan. He was holding this Govardhan mountain on his little finger of left hand. And all the Gopas and the gopis and the cows and the calves and peacocks, bulls. Everyone was looking at Krishna. Every single Vrijavasi is having the experience of looking straight into Krishna's eyes. And they were thinking that Krishna is looking, looking at me only, smiling at me only. Krishna is in the middle, center of Govardhan. And some Vrijavasis are in front of him. Some are on his left side, some are on his right side, some are behind him, some are very far away from him. Thousands and thousands of people are there and only one Krishna standing there. Although these Vrijavasis are behind Krishna, are on the left side or right side of Krishna, are very far away from Krishna. Every single Vrijavasi had the experience of seeing Krishna face to face. And receiving that reciprocation and smiles of Krishna. That's how Krishna enchanted everyone. And this is Govardhan Leela. And there are unlimited details in this Leela. And Krishna goes to the forest and he starts playing with all the cow head boys, friends. Throughout the day, these boys imitate monkeys. Swim like swans, dance like peacocks, jump like frogs. Hang on the trees like monkeys. In this way, they are so absorbed. So Krishna is very playful and is attached to performing so many Leelas. Not only in the Kovara stage, even in Poganda stage with all the friends, he would do so much of mischief. He would go to different gopis homes and steal butter from their homes. And bother them, make them angry. And, and these pastimes are not just stories. They are like golden keys to unlock our hearts and fill them with love, joy and devotion. That is the Leela Madhuri of Krishna. And the epitome of all the Vatsalya Leelas of Krishna is Damodar Leela. And the epitome of all the Madhurya pastimes of Krishna is the Rasa Leela. You remember in the Damodar Ashatam, in the last sloka, Satyavritamani says. Namoh Ananta Leelaya Devayatubhim. Oh Lord, you are ananta, you are unlimited and you are performer of unlimited pastimes. So this is about Leela Madhuri. Let's go to the next quality of Krishna. Third quality, Venu Madhuryam. Means Krishna is not only very beautiful Rupa Madhuri. Not only a performer of great pastimes, Leela Madhuri, he is also a wonderful player of flute. When Krishna plays flute, he expertly, expertly blends his flute song with the natural sounds of Vrindavan. What are some of the natural sounds of Vrindavan? Birds are chirping, natural breezes. And cows also make their sound. And when the, when the trees are just moving because of the breeze. Some flowers and some leaves of the trees fall down, they also make some very, very soft sound. So Krishna blends his flute song with these natural sounds of Vrindavan. Chirping of birds and breezes etcetera and waterfalls, they make some sound. And Krishna also plays flute according to different seasons. And in fact, in the tenth kind of Sriraman Bhagavatam, one full chapter is dedicated to describing Krishna's flute song. The gopis gathered together and they described the flute song of Krishna. So beautiful. And the gopis of Vrindavan say. There is no other purpose for the eyes than seeing Krishna entering the forest while playing his flute song. This is the realization of the gopis. He creates very new and enchanting melodies. Even great masters of musical science like Brahma, Shiva, Indra, Vishnu, they become mesmerized. And the rhythm and the tune is beyond anyone's understanding. Krishna's music completely captures the hearts of every single living being in the entire universe. No one can imitate Krishna in playing his flute. In the first sloka of this Venugita chapter. Sukhdevu Guswami describes how Krishna is entering into the forest of Vrindavan while playing flute. In the fifth sloka, he says. So that's about Krishna's beauty, but Krishna takes this flute and the flute has holes all over its body. And Krishna fills the holes of the flute with the nectar of his lips. And he generates mesmerizing melodies that completely enchant the masters of musical science in this universe. That is Krishna's Venu Madhuri. No one can play flute, flute as much as Krishna plays. As beautifully, as enchantingly as Krishna plays. So Krishna's flute shows how irresistible is sweet and attractive Krishna is. That music is not just sound, it's a loving invitation from Krishna himself, calling every soul to connect with him. In this beautiful sloka, let's focus on the third line. Third line. The meaning of this line is the flute song of Krishna is the real ornament for our ears. Right? Many of us, many devotees, they ornament their ears with some earring. But the real ornament for the ear is not the earring of some shape. The real ornament for the ear is the flute song of Krishna, is the holy name of Krishna. Is Krishna Katha. And in this context, it is flute song. So that is Venu Madhurya of Krishna. The last point. Last quality of Krishna that we are going to discuss today is Means Krishna is always surrounded by his loving devotees. Krishna doesn't sit alone. Of course, even if Krishna sits alone in Vrindavan. You may say, how come Krishna is alone? Actually Krishna is surrounded by the loving trees of Vrindavan, which are like Kalpa Brickshas. Krishna will be sitting on the bank of some river, Yamuna. Yamuna is a personality. All the water bodies in water bodies in Vrindavan, their personalities. These water bodies, thinking that Krishna is sitting on their banks. They become so excited, they become so grateful, they become so eager to offer something to Krishna. And they come and with their arms, they offer lotuses. What are the arms? What are the hands of the water bodies? The waves. The waves of these water bodies are their hands. And they pick up with the hands, they pick up the flowers, the lotus flowers which are growing in them. And come and offer them to the lotus feet of Krishna. That's how that the water bodies also please Krishna. And Krishna is surrounded by birds or peacocks or butterflies or deer. So Krishna is always surrounded by all these devotees, whether they are in the forms of animals. Or birds, or water bodies, or plants, or trees, or gopas, or gopis, or cows. Krishna is always surrounded by devotees. So coming to the specific rasa's of devotees who constantly surround Krishna. We have different types of devotees. Shanta bhaktas, vatsalya bhaktas, sakya bhaktas, dasya bhaktas and madhurya bhaktas. Means all the devotees of five rasa's uh come and surround Krishna and Brahma says. Aho bhagya, what great fortune, aho bhagya, what great fortune. Brahma in such a small anstupchandha sloka, he is repeating this phrase, aho bhagya, two times in the same line. Why? He is so excited. He wants to appreciate the glory of vrajavasis so much. This vraj, vraj bhumi, the vrajavasis uh are the uh devotees of Rindavan. Headed by Nandamaharas are extremely fortunate. Why are they fortunate? Because that poorana brahma, that supreme personality of Godhead Krishna is acting as a friend of all these vrajavasis and giving them great bliss, great happiness. If you have the topmost of all the personalities as your dearest friend, you are very fortunate. Oh, your friend is a VIP, your friend is a celebrity. Who can be a better VIP than Krishna? Who can be a greater celebrity than Krishna? And this VIP and this celebrity Krishna is acting as a friend of all the gopa boys. As a lover of all the gopi girls, as a child of all the elderly gopis and gopas. So this is how Krishna is uh very uh very much surrounded by all his devotees. Premna priyadikim. Vrajavasis are extremely fortunate. Of all the fortunate devotees of Krishna, vrajavasis are the most fortunate. And amongst them, especially amongst the vatsalya bhaktas, mother Yashoda is extremely fortunate. What is her fortune? What is her glory? Even Brahma is not as fortunate as mother Yashoda. Na bavo, even Lord Shiva is not as fortunate as mother Yashoda. Na Shri Lakshmi Devi, the goddess of fortune, is not as fortunate as mother Yashoda. She received such prasadam means such great mercy from Krishna. This is a very special um mercy that she has received. And and even Shiva and Brahma and Lakshmi also did not receive, that is the greatness of mother Yashoda. Yashoda matav tied Krishna with a rope? Who else can tie Krishna? Krishna binds all the conditioned souls with the results of their karma. He allows them or he, he makes them experience all the results of their past misdeeds. He binds them in this different material bodies according to their karma. But Yashoda matav bound Krishna with the rope of her love. And Krishna completely comes under the captivity and control of mother Yashoda. This is how Krishna is bound by the love of his devotees and that is the fortune of mother Yashoda. In childhood, in Kau Mara lela Krishna is surrounded by all the vatsalya bhaktas. And as he grows up, Krishna is surrounded by all the uh, all the uh paw, pawganda bhak, pawganda. He is surrounded by all the hmm uh gopas, gopa boys. So let's see about gopas. We have seen how Krishna is lovingly taking care of all the motherly gopis, the vatsalya gopis. Now let's see about the gopas, they are the sakya bhaktas. Okay, I will not go to all the details of this sloka, but I will directly go to the last line. Means the gopas of Rindavan are so fortunate that they are getting to play with Krishna. Well, the general devotees only worship Krishna and the materialistic people, they may consider Krishna as an ordinary uh child of this world. But the gopas of Rindavan, they are jumping along with Krishna like frogs. They are uh, they are uh dancing along with Krishna like peacocks. They are swimming along with Krishna like swans. They are doing lot of mischief. They are, they are jumping on different branches, one branch to another branch, like monkeys along with Krishna. They are eating with Krishna, they are sleeping with Krishna, they are serving Krishna, they are receiving service from Krishna, they are feeding Krishna, they are being fed by Krishna. What is the fortune of all these gopas? How amazing is the uh and gopis and the gopas of Rindavan? That is about pawganda lela, where Krishna performs so much lelas with the sakya bhaktas or the gopas. And what about gopis? The Kaishora lela of Krishna, where Krishna performs so many enchanting pastimes with the gopis of Rindavan. Means uh Krishna says, oh gopis of Rindavan, I cannot repay you. I am so indebted to you that I don't have the ability to clear your debt. May you be satisfied with your own good activities. Even if you give me the time of the lifespan of the great devatas like Brahma. In such a long duration also, I won't be able to sufficiently repay my debt to you. What have you done for me? Means you have cut all your uh family bonds just to please me, just to love me. Just to express your devotion to me, just to serve me, you have given up everything. You have given up everything and you have come to me. I am very indebted to you, I cannot sufficiently repay you. This is what Krishna tells the gopis of Rindavan. He is surrounded with the gopis. When he was very small, in his Kau Mara lela Krishna is constantly surrounded by the motherly gopis of Rindavan. When he is little grown up, in his pawganda lela Krishna is always surrounded by the gopa boyfriends of Krishna. And when he is little more grown up, uh he comes to Kaishora lela. Then Krishna is surrounded by all the younger gopis of Rindavan, like Shrimati Radharani. Like Lalita, Vishakha and all the gopis. So this is how Krishna is always surrounded by devotees, he is never alone. Similarly, we should also try to keep ourselves in the association of devotees. So Krishna says. The gopis of Rindavan are so fortunate that I am always remembering the enchanting lelas that I have performed with them. In Rindavan during the nights of Sharadhrutu. So Krishna is the supreme, but his heart belongs to those who love him selflessly. And is always surrounded by that selfless devotees, selfless lovers. So these are the four qualities of Krishna that we have discussed today. On the auspicious occasion of Sri Krishna Janmashtami, which we are going to celebrate just within a couple of days. So in the next session, we will discuss eight qualities of Krishna. Now this is, the whole discussion is only uh about Krishna. But in tomorrow's session, we will discuss something, uh some qualities of Krishna that are very relevant for us to apply in our own practical lives. Then we will also discuss Brahavi Mohanalela very soon. So in this uh way, when we come together and discuss Krishna katha, that's the best way to develop our own love for Krishna. Our own affection for Krishna and uh celebrate Janmashtami. Janmashtami is not just having so many festivities, decorations, all that is important, we have to do all that. But we need to also prepare our consciousness, we need to prepare our mood to receive Krishna into our lives. And that preparation of mood happens by hearing Krishna katha. By reminding ourselves of Krishna's name, rupa, guna, lela. And by expressing our sincere gratitude and affection towards Krishna. And expressing our gratitude to Shri La Prabhupada and all the acharyas who introduced us to Krishna or introduced Krishna to us. Without Shri La Prabhupada, without all the Vaishnavacharyas, without Lord Chitanya Mahaprabhu, where is the possibility of we worshiping Krishna or serving Krishna or developing any affection for Krishna? Krishna loves all of us, this is an eternal fact. So Krishna loves every single living being, even if the living being is so sinful. And he takes the form of a snake or a scorpion or hmm or a ant or an insect or worm in stool also, Krishna doesn't leave that living entity. Krishna stays within the heart of that living being as super soul, as paramatma. Who else loves us more than Krishna does? Krishna loves us the most, Krishna loves us more than anyone else in the entire creation. And by the way, if our consciousness is pure, we love Krishna more than anyone else in the entire creation. Krishna loves us the most and we love Krishna the most, this is an eternal fact. We may not be able to realize it when the consciousness is impure, but when the consciousness is pure, then we love Krishna more than anybody else. And we will realize that Krishna loves us more than anyone else. And the vrajavasis are in such pure consciousness, every single vrajavasi. All the gopas and gopis and even cows and calves also, they love Krishna more than their own children, their own parents, their own relatives. All the madhurya gopis, they love Krishna more than their own so-called husbands. All the vatsalya gopis of Rindavan, they love Krishna more than their own children. All the uncles of Krishna, uh Nandamaharas friends, they love Krishna more than their own children. All the cows love Krishna more than their own calves. In the Brahavi Mohanalela, when Krishna appeared in the form of the calves of the, all these cows. These cows started loving those calves which are basically Krishna's forms. And they gave more attention to these Krishna calves than their own calves, than other calves. Krishna took the form of these calves and started interacting with the cow. And the cow gave this, gave her attention more to this older cow which is Krishna. And not so much attention to the younger cow which is not Krishna. So this is what happened in Brahavi Mohanalela. So in the purest state of our consciousness, we love Krishna more than anyone else. And we wish to serve Krishna more than doing any other activity. We wish to chant Krishna's names more than uttering any other materialistic sounds. We wish to hear Krishna's pastimes more than uh any other materialistic activities, materialistic topics. This is how we have a natural affinity towards Krishna. As Prahalad Maris says in the seventh cant of Bhagavatam. Just as iron particles are very naturally attracted to a magnet. We souls also, in our pure consciousness, we are naturally attracted towards Krishna. That natural attraction is there by default, but somehow we have forgotten it. But we can revive it. The good news is, all of us can revive our original natural attraction towards Krishna. By performing bhakti yoga, by following the nine processes of bhakti, shravanam, kirtanam, smaranam, bhadasivam. Sometimes when that living entity is so exhausted and tired of experiencing so many difficulties and miseries in this material world. They try to find out some solutions to their problems. But they forget that Krishna is the only protector. He gives the ultimate solution. In fact, taking shelter of Krishna is the ultimate solution to all problems. Krishna is the only protector, only savior. Jagatray guru, he is the supreme master, supreme teacher of the entire universe. Therefore, let us offer obeisances only to Krishna. Means only Krishna can destroy all our enemies. The real enemies are not outside. The real enemies are inside in the form of envy, pride, greed, lust and other bad qualities. This entire universe came from Krishna and it again goes back into Krishna. Therefore, hey Krishna raksha svama. We need to pray to Krishna, Krishna you protect me. Protection is not just from a material calamity. Protection is from material consciousness, not from material calamity. Even if you happen to be Krishna's father or Krishna's mother or Krishna's brother. We cannot avoid calamity in this material world. Right? Material calamity is unavoidable, but material consciousness is avoidable. Let's try to avoid material consciousness. For example Vasudev and Devaki, they are the parents of Krishna. Even before Krishna's birth, right from the moment of their marriage. Krishna's parents Vasudev and Devaki were experiencing unlimited difficulties. Right on the day of the marriage, Kamsa picked up a sword to kill Devaki Mata in front of everybody. Somehow Vasudev came and negotiated with Kamsa and the arrangement was that Devaki will not be killed. Devaki's sons, Vasudev will submit to Kamsa, that's the arrangement made. Then the first son was submitted to uh submitted to Kamsa. Kamsa initially said, okay, fine, I will not kill, but later he changed his mind and he killed. Like that one by one, Kamsa killed six children of mother Devaki, of Kamsa, uh of Vasudev. So uh before even Krishna's appearance in their lives. Vasudev and Devaki had to undergo tremendous amount of difficulties, isn't it? Similarly, before Krishna appears in our lives, in our hearts. We should also be willing to undergo all kinds of material calamities if needed. Right? So we cannot avoid material calamities, but we must avoid material consciousness. Vasudev and Devaki were surrounded by calamities, but their, their consciousness was fixed on Krishna. And Acharyas say that these six uh children of mother Devaki killed by Kamsa, they were um uh they, they represent the six anarthas, right? And when the six anarthas are destroyed, then Krishna makes his appearance. When we take shelter of guru, then Krishna makes his appearance. When we undergo any amount of tribulations, when we are willing to undergo any amount of calamities to invite Krishna into our lives, then Krishna makes his appearance. Not that calamities are a necessity, but calamities just have, can just happen in this world. Calamities, we cannot avoid calamities. In Shri La Prabhupada says that in a salt mine, whichever corner you go, you will only find salt there, isn't it? You will not find sugar there. Similarly, in this material world, wherever you go, you will only find calamities, you will not find ecstasy there. But we need to endure all of them, we need to tolerate all of them and protect our consciousness and surrender to Krishna. and surrender to Krishna, reconnect with Krishna. So Vasudev and Devaki, they did not have an opportunity to celebrate Janmashtami. We are going to celebrate Janmashtami just day after tomorrow. But Vasudev and Devaki, they did not have an opportunity to celebrate the birthday of Krishna. They were celebrating in the mind, within the mind. Nanda, Yasodham, sorry, Vasudev was offering millions of cows as charity. But but physically he could not celebrate because his hands were shackled, he was present, imprisoned. And uh although Krishna appeared as the eighth child of Vasudev and Devaki, did Krishna destroy their calamities? Did Krishna um immediately kill Kamsa and release Vasudev and Devaki from the prison cell? No. Krishna appeared as the eighth child of Devaki and Vasudev and said, Vasudev, take me to Gokul, I want to live with Yasodhamata and Nanda Maharaj and all the Gopas and Gopis, I will not stay here. Krishna, when will you kill Kamsa? I will kill him later. After a decade, I will come back and kill him. Till then you suffer. You suffer my suffer, suppression. Since their marriage day till Krishna appeared, Vasudev and Devaki suffered so much. They also suffered the death of six children, they suffered some imprisonment. But now finally Krishna appeared, the suffering should stop, right? No, suffering continued and in fact it's more suffering. Suffering or separation from Krishna is a greater suffering. So Krishna appeared as their child and immediately went to Gokul and Vasudev had to execute it personally. Vasudev had to personally take his son and leave him Nanda Maharaj's home and come back. Vasudev never questioned Krishna, Krishna, you are Krishna, you are the supreme personality of Godhead. Why can't you just immediately kill Kamsa? You have appeared right already, first kill Kamsa and do other lelas. Then Krishna says, no, 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 I will do all Rindavan lelas, then after a decade, when Naradumai comes and reminds me, then I will come and kill Kamsa, till then you wait. Wait in separation from me. He can't see all my childhood lelas. Of course, he did not literally say, but that's what has happened, isn't it? So before Krishna appears in, appeared in their lives or after Krishna appeared in their lives, there is suffering in the life of Krishna's parents. What to speak of us? So whatever may be the amount of suffering, just consider it, consider it as a result of our own past deeds and endure that suffering and depend on Krishna. And the best way to depend on Krishna is to chant Krishna's names. So this Janmashtami, let us pray to Krishna to give us the ability to endure whatever we need to endure, to experience whatever we need to experience as a result of our past deeds and then increase our love and affection and dependence on Krishna. That's the prayer. And we can offer this prayer most effectively by chanting Krishna's names. And the chanting of Krishna's names will give us the strength to progress in Bhakti while tolerating whatever is going on around us. Because when we chant Krishna's names, Krishna, when we say, we are remembering that we have an eternal bonding with Krishna. We are remembering that Krishna is my protector. We are remembering that we have nothing to do with this material world, right? So when it, the more we chant Krishna's names, the more we can make a connection with Krishna. In fact, making a connection with Krishna, establishing a relationship with Krishna is most effectively done by chanting Krishna's names, especially in Kaluga, Kalavat Dharikirtanath. Shatru Chhedaika Mantram, Sakalamupanishadva Kyasam Poochamantram. Samsaro Chhedam Mantram, Samuchitamasa Sange Niryaaan Mantram. Sarvaishvariyaika Mantram, Vyasanabhujaga Sandashta Santraan Mantram. Jihve Shrikrishnamantram, Japa Japa Satatam Janmasaphalya Mantram. Jihve Shrikrishnamantram, Japa Japa Satatam with your tongue, chant the Shrikrishnamantra, Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Janmasaphalya to make your life meaningful, purposeful, useful and enlivening by making it as an offering to Krishna's lotus feet. Let us chant the holy names of Krishna. When devotee asks me, true, when we chant Hare Krishna, I heard that we are giving pleasure to Krishna. How, how is it possible like my chanting of Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare, that will give pleasure to Radha and Krishna? Uh how am I supposed to understand this? So when we are chanting Hare Krishna, definitely we are trying to connect with Krishna, that is one facet of the story. But actually, when we are chanting Hare Krishna, it's a service to Krishna, service to Shrimati Radharani. It gives them pleasure, it gives them happiness. How? Answer is very simple. In the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, Hare is Shrimati Radharani, isn't it? Krishna is the supreme Lord Krishna. Whenever we chant Radha's name, Krishna becomes happy. Whenever we chant Krishna's name, Radha becomes happy. When we chant Hare Krishna, when we utter Hare, we are attracting Krishna's heart. Oh, who is this person who is chanting my dear Radharani's name? Krishna becomes attracted. And when we say Krishna, when we go to the second syllable, second word of the mantra and say when we say Krishna, then Radharani becomes attracted. Oh, who is that personality who is chanting my beloved Krishna's name? So when we say Hare Krishna, Hare attracts Krishna's attention, Radha, Krishna attracts Radharani's attention. Thus, we are giving them so much pleasure, we are giving them so much happiness. So Radharani derives immense joy when she hears Krishna's name. And Krishna derives immense pleasure when he hears Radharani's name. But when we chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra, we are trying to serve Radha and Krishna, we are trying to give them unlimited happiness. And not, not just that, we are also trying to connect with them. We are uplifting our own consciousness, we are purifying ourselves of all the Anarthas, we are trying to reconnect with Radha and Krishna and also rendering service. So chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra is also service. We are giving pleasure to Radha and Krishna, we are pleasing. The purpose of all the endeavors that we take up in Bhakti is for Krishna's pleasure. Samshiddhir Hari To Oshanam, isn't it? Whatever we are doing, we are doing it for Krishna's pleasure. When we are chanting also, we are giving Krishna pleasure. But when we are inattentively chanting, Krishna is not pleased. Krishna has to be pleased, right? So to me, to please him, we need to chant uh attentively. I am not qualified to say this. I am also struggling to keep myself attentive in chanting, I need your blessings, this Janmashtami, so that I can chant attentively. But uh but the fact is, the more attentively, the more sincerely and the more we chant, the more we please Radha and Krishna. The more we render service to Radha and Krishna, in fact, they become happy for another reason. Radharani becomes happy when we chant Krishna's name. Krishna becomes happy when we say Hare. But they both become happy for one more reason. Actually, they are very, very unhappy to see us struggling in this material world. When the pure soul, part and parcel of Krishna, the atma, pure soul is struggling and rotting in this material existence that actually pains the heart of Krishna, pains the heart of Shrimati Radharani. But when we chant Hare Krishna, we are trying to come out of this material miseries, come out of the material consciousness. Then Krishna and Radharani become very happy. Oh, finally this fellow is making some progress towards our lotus feet. Finally, he is, he is this, this conditioned soul who has been living in this material for material world for millions and billions of years, millions of lifetimes, is making some attempt to come out of this gutter of this material existence and reconnect with us to come to Goloka, to come to Vaikuntha. That makes them very happy. When the child is sick, parents become unhappy. But when the child is showing some signs of improvement in health, parents become very happy, right? Similarly, when the conditions also are rotting in this material existence, our eternal parents Radha and Krishna become unhappy. But when we are trying to make some attempts to perform Bhakti yoga and showing some symptoms of curing this material disease, Radha and Krishna become very happy. Let's try to make them happy, this Janmashtami and this upcoming Radhastami. In couple of weeks, we will be celebrating Radhastami also. So let's give them pleasure, let's serve them, let's make them happy and let's be happy. Shri Krishna Janmashtami, Maha Mahotsav Kijaye, Shri Lapa Prabhupad Kijaye, Hare Krishna. So we'll conclude here and and we will meet once again for this Janmashtami occasion. Thank you very much. Prithrash Shrimath Bhagavatam Kijaye.